So you can share your screen. And feel free to. To share. So some of the things that we were wondering about is, well, tell me what your top. Questions that you get, what you think is really exciting about Moxie, what would be a good thing for you to share?
Sure, well, I get asked quite a bit of things, obviously, as you can imagine, one of the big ones is what's new? Uh, just because, you know, depending on what group you are in, you may have launched eight months ago. And if you haven't really been in the product lot, uh, you know, people are kind of curious as to what's been added, what's changed, et cetera. So that that's usually a frequent question. Um, I get, I get asked quite a bit about, um, just. The best way to do certain business tasks, right? There may be things that you think, well, I should probably use impress for this, but it actually makes a little bit more sense to use. Uh, present, right? Or, uh, you know, we're trying to do something and engage that, you know. The system's not really built for, so you're probably better off using, you know, a different phase of that. So that's, that's another thing, um. You know, the, the integrations between the, between the different products, I get asked a lot. Um, and so it really kind of varies, um. You know, we, we get a lot of feature requests. Um, you know, there's, there's two different things. If you go to, if you go to support dot moxie works dot com, there's feature requests. And then there's actual bugs and feature requests that. What a lot of people don't know is that the order in which we handle those feature requests isn't actually set by us. It's set by anywhere. So we work with their team. We have all the feature requests together, uh, you know, a big part of what we work on. First, second or third is going to be based on if something is actually broken, right? We want to make sure that that's fixed. But in terms of adding, adding in some functionality or, you know, hey, can we add more fields to X or something like that? That usually, um, you know. It's a combination of. You know, frankly, how many people have asked for it as well as just our internal team and anywhere's internal team saying, yeah, that's something that would be a. A major boost to the system. There's the nice to haves. And then there's the, yeah, we should really have this in there. So those, those are probably the biggest things, which. There isn't a lot of, uh. You know, there isn't a lot of visibility in that process. So as I've been at one twenty-one and I was just at ERA fuel. Yeah, I get asked a lot about, well, you know, I put in this feature request now what? Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of visibility into that either. Um, and again, it's mostly set by. Our friends in New Jersey. So, um, that's something that we're actually having our quarterly business review internally at Moxie this week. And that's something that I've kind of pushed for is. If we can get a little bit more visibility on what's to come, what's, you know, what's been, what's been added. Things of that nature. So, um, you know, in terms of what's new, um, I do, I can share with you guys if you'd like. I've got a deck that's got. You know. A cu- a quick overview of each product and here's what we've added to it that you might be curious about or maybe haven't seen, um. And then obviously you sent over some questions, which I have answers to and can answer other questions, you know, to the best of my ability. So.
That sounds great.
Cool.
You can just take this anyway.
Pardon?
You can share your screen.
Okay, cool. Yeah. So I promise I won't PowerPoint everybody to death. It's just easier to take over what's new by using this. So. Right here, one second. Share this. Alright, so, um, this is the deck I put together. And again, I'm going to kind of skip through parts of it just because I know you guys are fairly well versed. Um, on the, on the suite of products, but I really want to talk about kind of what's been added to some major features that maybe you didn't know about, um, as we go through. So. Just. So you guys already know this about us, kind of what our mission is, um, you know, it's. We're over, I think we. Have passed now a quarter billion agents from anywhere that we've had it on. So that four hundred thousand is. Closer to a half million or more. So, um, all this to say, we work with a lot of companies, uh. Continue to work with a lot of companies. And even before this, if you're not kind of sure how the genesis of this whole thing happened, which some of you might have heard this at one twenty-one, but. Um, we actually worked with, uh, CB. Uh, NRT, um, with present. So that was kind of the first start at anywhere in terms of our relationship. And then, uh, we did an agreement to bring the full Moxie work suite, uh, to the anywhere brands. And so. Prior to that, we typically worked with your mega one thousand companies. So, you know, even though we're new to anywhere, we're not new to. Real estate. We've been in the industry for ten, over ten years now. Uh, and we have typically worked with the larger enterprise level brokerages. And that's been kind of the part of the fun of this launch, but also a little bit of the challenge. Just because, you know, you guys are very, very lucky that you have infrastructure and, you know, somebody like Jody who can really kind of help. Quarterback some of this stuff. And, and so part of the learning process has been, you know, how do we roll this out to a thirty agent brokerage? Versus a three hundred agent brokerage. So that's been, uh, that's been an interesting challenge, but one that I enjoy because I've worked in. Brokerages that small and I've worked in seven hundred agent brokerages. So, um, you know, that's one of my kind of personal challenges. I think you guys all know this, but another thing I talk about a lot is, um, make sure you've checked out our support website. Not just for tickets. That is absolutely where you have to go to submit a ticket. If you have an issue. That you think is a tech issue, your first step should always be to go and submit a ticket. The reason being is because our team works with the anywhere team. On the tickets, because as you could imagine, just based on how our two systems, our two environments work together, we pull in almost all of our data. From anywhere. So there, when we have a ticket, um, you know, if it's on our, our side of the fence or their side of the fence, we are always working together with that team. But the other thing that's great about the website is there's a ton of videos and a ton of content. So. Whereas in your, you, the C twenty-one university, the learning portal, um, you're going to get longer classes, you know, here's a forty-five minute class on present. The support website's great where if you just have a very specific question, you know, how do I create a contact and engage? Or how do I do this? Um, you know, if, and then you're going to find like a two to three minute video. Uh, with an FAQ PDF usually. So, um, much easier to kind of find the answer to your question, uh, is by using that support website. And if you haven't been there lately, we've re-done it and spent a lot of work on it. So there's now a whole getting started section. Uh, right off the front page, and then you can see the various products and you can kind of go down the journey for each one. Uh, we've also got an education website that's education dot moxie works dot com. That we refer a lot of folks to, and that has classes that you can take. Um, on engage and present from both a user level and from an admin level. So if you are the people that has an admin access. Uh, that's a great place to go and learn. And then obviously for in product, we've got an Autobot functionality. Uh, that ends up bringing you in touch with a live person as well. So we try to make sure that we can get to your questions the best we can. Through those, um, you know about the suite, what you get, present, impress. Engage talent websites. Um, we call that the marketing pack. We call this the productivity pack. Um, most of the questions I get are about engage and present. To be honest, talent is if you're a recruiter or manager, that is an add-on for engage, uh, that you can use for recruiting retention. Uh, but those tend to be the things that we get the most about. So. In terms of. Present, the other question I get is. Um, how can I best use this to build, but build my business? And what I find is. You know, the great place to start is obviously it's a CMA tool. It does a great job on that. But where it really shines. Is when you start doing things like a buyer tour, a relocation guide, new construction, things like that, you know, anytime you can use it. For more than just a CMA, that's where you can really put a little more bang into your presentations, um. You know, for example, when I moved to Fayetteville, I'm in Fayetteville, Arkansas, when I moved here, I'd been here once. So, you know, if somebody had a present presentation about like, here's the best hiking trails and here's the best. Here's, you know, information on the community and video and, and, you know, virtual tours wherever it may be, that's super helpful. Um, and so we allow you to do that. It's really, I think about it, it's like PowerPoint for real estate. And so we find that the agents who have the best. Um, increase in terms of transactions are the ones who take, who use it for a lot of different things. Um, one of the exercises that I do, uh, with companies if I'm onsite. For an event is I'll walk people through how to create a pre-listing package. And that way it's right there. Um, you create a link, you put it at the end of your email signature. And that way, when you meet somebody and you send them a nice little email, can say right there, you know, click here to learn more about what it's like to work with me. And that's awesome because that way, when you actually do have a meeting with that prospective buyer seller, you get to spend a lot more time talking about them than talking about ourselves. Right? Um, you know, you get a lot of that out of the way by having that pre. Uh, that pre-listing package or, you know, a buyer, buyer information package. If you're in an open house here, let me text you a link to tell us a little bit more about what we do. Um, but yeah, let's set up some time and then they can read about it and hopefully see videos of your testimonials, right? And that's where it really, the rich media part. Um, can be really, really impactful. Um. But it is always on demand with live data. So that's, uh, that's something I always like to make sure to call out. So. The only data that does not update is the price recommendation. So if you're doing a CMA and you say that this is how much the price should be, whether you're using a range or a fixed number, that number doesn't change. All the other data will show the live data. So if you had five actives when you created the report and three days later, there's two actives and the other ones went pending. It will reflect that, um, but the only one that doesn't is what you're saying that you feel like the property should be listed at. Um. And obviously you can make it as, you can really drill down in terms of using the adjustments to, you know. Make apples a little bit closer to oranges as far as how tight you're, a lot of the places we're dealing with have very tight inventory. So. You know, you're able to do some adjustments and you can even go in and edit the remarks, which is great, um, because then you can kind of talk to the client. Um, through your presentation, which I love. So, you know, if there's something that the, the listing agent forgot to mention. Uh, but that you thinks a feature that your clients can like, you can go in there and be like, hey, Jody, this is the property that has the beautiful home media center downstairs. Or this is the one that backs up to a school, so you'll never have neighbors behind you. So, you know, there's a lot you can do with the, kind of the adjustments of that. Um, you know, you guys have probably all seen this, but basically what we found is that. Agents, we know that some agencies aren't going to use what they have, right? It's just for whatever reason. You know, they either don't trust broker software or they have their own software or they're just not techie. Um, so we looked at this across over eighty different companies around the country. And we found that the agents who didn't use present at all averaged about ten and a half transactions. If they used it a little bit, they averaged about eleven and a half, and the ones who used it regularly averaged eighteen point four. So, and we have this similar data with engage. So what we know, um, through working with companies over the last decade is that if you use present a little, you'll do a little better. And if you use present a lot, you'll do a lot better. Um, and we see this again and again, regardless of company size. So what's new, uh, with present? Uh, one of the big things is you can now show scheduled showing times of presentations. So if you're bringing somebody out for showing. Doing a buyer tour, et cetera, you can actually have, um, the time show up in there versus just the order. Of the properties, which is a, a, a feature that was asked for, um, you know, and it really makes it better for when you're trying to take people out for showings. Um, and again, I always like to mention when you are using one of these tours, uh, for showings. Don't forget that the buyers or prospective buyers have the ability to create remarks and notes. In that presentation, the only you and they can see. Um, you know, I've been in, in the industry for going on twenty years next year, I think. Um, you know, we can't just stand out on the front porch and talk anymore, right? Everybody's got ring cameras and cameras everywhere. So this allows you, as your clients going through the property, they can put their notes confidentially. And then you guys can go and review them. So that's, uh, the scheduled showing times and presentations. Uh, you can see kind of what it looks like here. Uh, another thing is we have a new thing called a property review, and this has been really popular. Uh, in the first quarter of this year. And basically this is a great, um, great thing to kind of do once a year. Or maybe a couple of times a year for, for past clients to say, hey, I did a property review. It's kind of bringing you up to speed on the market and where your house, your, your property lies within that market. Um, again, when we look at the usage, this is actually probably. I think when I looked last quarter, um, and we're just still putting the, the rest of the numbers together for first quarter, but. Property review, I think was the third highest after, um, seller and buyer tour. So, uh, really popular. If you haven't used it, check it out. And, and it's just an easy touch point with past clients to say, hey. You know, we're through the first quarter of the year. You might have heard a lot of things on the news about what's going on, but here's a snapshot of your property. You know, let me know if you have any questions, um, and you can jam through these pretty quick. In terms of sending them out to folks. So if you haven't seen that, definitely check out the property review. So any questions about present before I go forward? And again, I'm just buzzing through these because I want to get, save time for your questions. Um. Great, alright, so we'll. Hi Patty.
Hi, how are you? Thanks for coming on. At a brokerage level, uh, do we have the ability to change our template or we have to create a whole new template?
As far as what?
The, the, uh, CMA template. So there's a, you know, a brokerage template in there.
Mm-hmm.
So on our backend, can we change one or two pages in there or?
You can't edit. So we have pre-created pages. You can't edit the pre-created pages, but you can add new pages and you can create templates. At a bro- at an admin level or brokerage level, and then you can share those to either a subset of your agents, one agent, all your agents. So. Yeah, you have that power to be able to do that.
Okay, so we'd be able to copy that broker tablet and then add custom pages and that we did and make that our tablet here with the ages.
Correct. Yep.
Alright, thank you.
No problem. And I could show you kind of, I'll, I'll go into the products, um, and I can kind of show you how that works. So, um. So impressed, there's, I think most of you guys presents are impress is the easiest product to use because you don't have to do anything. Um, if you get a new listing, you'll get an email that has, uh, you know, materials that have automatically been created. Um, that you can just click and share. None of our products will automatically post things for you. You have to actually click a couple of buttons to post, and that's by design. Um, just because we don't want brokers coming to us saying, hey, our agents are spamming this stuff. Um. So if you make a change to listing data, pricing, you'll get an updated email that has updated materials. If you want to do an open house, you'll actually get another email that has specific, and this is an open house in the MLS. That's how the, the system knows. Um, so if you put an open house in the MLS, you'll get another email with materials created just for that. And then when the property closes, uh, you'll get a final email. That allows you to promote that. Um, this is just the generic branding. If you haven't gone into C twenty-one, it's created their own branding for these packages. They look great. And they're really just designed to kind of help you guys out. So you're not sitting there. Spending a ton of time on Canva, um, you know, you're getting an email automatically. That's like, hey, if you want to do a same-day radius mailing, click here. If you want to share it on Facebook, click here, you know, here's a single property website, whatever it may be. So it's a great starting point just to give you. A bunch of marketing, um, you know, right away that you can use, um, that's got all of your information on it. We haven't done a whole lot, um, as far as adding a whole bunch new to this. Um, if you go into the marketing center, there will be some flyers. And different things that the brand creates, they will show up in your, uh, in your marketing. This shows better homes, but obviously C twenty-one has their own. Um, so this will be where you want to, if you want to come in and kind of create your own thing. So you can, for the biggest way I see this used is if you have. An agent who's holding an open house for you, um, they can come in here and create an open house flyer with their information and your information on it. Um, or also if you work with buyers. You can come in here and create. Pro- brochures, postcards, things of that nature to try to market yourself. Um, so it's, uh, designed to be super easy to use. Which means it's not. Uh, uh, not like the world's most customizable system. You know, this isn't a full-on graphic suite that you can go in and change every little thing on it, but. It's designed to give you good-looking marketing materials. And I can tell you that back when I ran brokerages, I used to literally make my agents repeat after me that the customer multi photoc printout in the MLS is not an open house flyer. It would drive me crazy when I went to open houses and I saw that because it just. Let's not forget the people who come to the open house, you know, a lot of times you get the nosey neighbors and if they're thinking I'm going to sell. They're going, okay, this is what this person did for this, like, come on. Um, so, you know, it's, it's a very simple, easy-to-use system. You can create a flyer and. Three minutes. It brings in the listing data. Um, so definitely want to check that out. The biggest thing that's new in there is, um, if from an admin level, we've made it easier to impersonate. So if you have a marketing coordinator or somebody that. Can create, you know, hey, can you come in and create these for the agents? We've made it easier for them to do that. Pardon me, sorry about that. Um. That's really the biggest things we've added to impress. Now, impress, impress used to be improv. We bought the system about two and a half years ago. The reason I mentioned that is because there isn't, um. If you have contacts in here, it's not the same contacts. This is in engage. Um, that's something that'll come eventually. It's just hasn't done it yet. Um, I know somebody asked a question about, um, sending postcards right from engage. You can't actually do that through engage. Um, there's a way, if you have, if you work with a company called Quantum Digital. We do have a partnership with them, so that, that would be the way you could do it. But if your company's not using Quantum Digital. Um, there's not really a way to do that. You'd want to essentially take your contacts that you want to send. Postcards to, um, and. Export them. You know, or make a copy out of engage and bring them into impress, and then you can use that. So because impress has a integration with, uh. Express stocks and a bunch of different other companies. So you can actually create postcards in there. And then you'll have options in terms of getting things printed out and mailed. So that was one of the questions that came in, um. I'll cover the other ones as I'm going through, but I did want to point that out, that if you're wanting to do mailings, impress is going to be where you want to do that. Um, mailing labels is different and I'll talk about that, um, when we get to, uh, present a little bit more. So engage, this is my favorite part of the suite. It is when I put my broker hat back on, this is the place where you can really. See big changes happen within a brokerage. Uh, this is that same case study that we did. And you can see very similar numbers. Eleven transactions if they didn't use engage, thirteen point three if they had moderate and eighteen if they used it regularly. Um. Good, the more you use it, the more it can help you out. Um, why I love engage is to me, um, we know that there's a subset of agents who are going to use it. Um. I think engage the magic. Um, it can help any agent be more successful without a doubt. Um, but if you're a admin or a manager, this is for that middle fifty percent, right? So when we quartile our agents and we look at the top twenty-five percent, the middle fifty and the bottom twenty-five. This can really drive, um, business for that middle swath of agents. Um, you know, if you're a top producer and you're going from forty deals a year to forty-five deals a year. That's cool. That looks great. But if you go from five deals a year to ten deals a year, that's life-changing for that agent, right? So. Um, love what this can do to help. Plus it's based on, and you'll hear this a lot, it's based on your sphere of influence. Um, which we know year after year, that's where your business comes from. So. Again, sorry about that. Um, I've been a little under the weather, but, um. We try to make it very, very easy to use and make it inflow with your day. So I was. Kind of joked that this can be really the dashboard of your business, um. Because of the integrations. With your email, with your contacts, with your calendar, you can kind of do everything just from engage. Um, so I always suggest to folks, you know, unfortunately, don't share this with corporate Jody, but unfortunately. Um, anywhere decided that you have to go through the portal to get to engage, which is not optimal. But I always tell agents, first thing in the morning. Load up engage. You can always put a, uh, shortcut on your phone. For that page. So you load up engage and just leave it open, um, in your web browser all day. And that way, as you're doing business, you can pop back over to it. You can make calls from it. You can do all sorts of this stuff. Um. Just right there. And it brings in your calendar, which is great because if you haven't used engage a lot. Part of the magic and the reason I call it a productivity system is that as we're in these different sales flows. So let's say somebody's a prospect, right? That's somebody that. Hasn't really raised their hand. Say, yes, I want to list my property or yes, I want to sign a buyer's agreement, but we're talking about it. Um, well, if I'm talking to this person and finally they're like, yeah, I'm ready to list my property. And I move them from prospects to actives, that's going to generate a whole list of tasks that are based on best practices and input from anywhere. That says, okay, here's what you do next. And then those tasks will actually integrate into your calendar. So you can literally. Log into this for the day, check your calendar, see your business tasks, but it'll also say, don't forget about Jenny's soccer game at six. Or our business meeting at two, whatever it may be. So we try to make it easy to use, um, for anybody who's a manager or an admin on this call, um. We, we give you this, uh, for agents, just so you know, um. Admins cannot see your contacts. Unless you give them permission, that has to be explicit permission in the system. Otherwise, all they can see is how many people. How many contacts you have in each bucket. Marketing prospect, that's the penings. It shows your GCI goal that you've set. It says. You have for neighborhood news and then a status. And this is an AI status. That basically looks at what you're doing based on what your goal is to see if you're on the right track or not. So if you're saying, hey, I want to do. Five hundred grand in GCI and you have a hundred people in your contacts, it's going to tell you any more contacts, right? So, um, it does allow you to do this. I like this from a managerial perspective, and I don't know how many managers we have on the call versus admins or versus agents, but. Um, why I like it is actives. I can pull up and see who's got the actives. Now remember, actives are people that our agents are working with, but they haven't gone pending yet. So I feel like I can pull this up. And if I see that Abigail agent has five actives, I can go to Abigail and say, hey. I know you're working with these folks. What can I do to help you get a few of them across the finish line? You know, what's, what's holding up? Do we need to talk about how to do a price improvement? Do we have to talk about doing, you know, uh, expanding our search for a buyer, whatever it may be? So allows you to be very proactive in a way that a lot of other programs don't give you that visibility, which that to me, I think is the way that we can really make an impact. Uh, with our agents. Um, it also has really nice goal setting. So this is an example agent here and you can see that, um. Here's Pete for nine fourteen. Shows the GCI goal, how many transactions he's done, average size. Shows who's, how many contacts are in his database totally and as well as in the sales flow. And then you can actually save the stats. So that way you can compare year over year, preferably month over month. And then you can also put notes. So if I met with Pete. And said, hey, Pete, um, you know. You need to get more contacts. I mean, he added almost twenty. Would like to see more, but that's, that's good. You can see that his GCI goal, he raised it. He's done twelve transactions versus nine. His average size is slightly smaller, um, but, you know, he's going for it. So this allows us to. Have this kind of history. And so, you know, I always tried to meet with every one of my agents at least once every other month, um. Depending on how big your brokerage is. And so I would totally have used this to save it. Put in the notes what we talked about. And then when I meet with them again, we can take a look at where they're at now and say, okay, how do we do, right? So really nice, easy function. And if I clicked on GCI goal, you can actually kind of go in there and it shows things like. What's your percentage of, um, buyers versus sellers, average time on market? So there's a lot more stats that come up. Um, so you can really do a nice deep dive with that agent. Or if you're the agent, you have this information for yourself. Neighborhood news is the easiest way to make money with Moxie Works Suite, period. I'll repeat that. Neighborhood news is the easiest way to make extra money. With Moxie Works, period. If all an agent does is upload their contacts. And put them on neighborhood news, they're almost guaranteed to do an extra one or two. Is that a question? Sorry. Okay. I wasn't sure if that was a question or somebody wasn't on mute, but.
No, I think somebody's on another Zoom.
It's all good. I'm used to that. So how, you know how many rail turns it takes to screw in a light bulb? Hey, you want to go ride bikes? So, yeah, I have ADD. I get it. Um, so, yeah, neighborhood news, um. Again and again and again, I see this. So, um, we, it's funny, we actually, I'll tell a story I don't usually tell. Um, we did a test with a brokerage. And we said, hey, let us help you do more with neighborhood news. And they had forty agents. And we signed up all forty agents, all their contacts for neighborhood news. But we used a zip code that was about. Fifteen miles outside their normal area. And they were like, uh, should we do this? Like, oh, yeah, just trust us, just trust us, just trust us. And day one, you'd think we were the devil. I mean, everybody's like, oh my gosh, I can't believe we're sending this stuff out and blah, blah, blah. But guess what happened? People go, hey, I got this from you. Um, I don't know why it's showing this zip code, but I prefer information about nine eight one oh four. Oh, okay, I'll get that squared away. It's a new, it's a new feature. Sorry about that. Or, you know, hey, thanks for sending me that. Um, I actually edited the zip code, which you can do as a client. And now I'm looking at this. And long story short, basically. They got all these replies from folks. Thanking you for the information and then telling them exactly where they wanted to look instead. And they set something like ten or twelve listing appointments in like three days. Um, it's, it's something that I. Um, it's, it's something that I've literally shown this product to brokers and managers. Two and a half years ago, and I still get an email every month that says that Jody opened up her neighborhood news. It is really simple, easy to use. Um, the thing I like to mention about this is you can actually do a more detailed. Customized neighborhood news. The easiest thing to do is to do the quick ad, which is literally just their name, their email and a zip code. But you can, within contacts, do a custom search for these folks. So for example, if you're in Seattle where Moxie Works is based, if I'm gonna do something from downtown, I've got either. Condos or I've got really expensive houses. So if I have somebody that I know can't afford the houses. Looking for condos, I can put in uh search criteria that it only shows uh condos. Or I can put in, you know, I can go in and draw on the map like the exact area that that person's looking for. So you can actually really make this pretty detailed uh on a one to one level. So um, definitely something to check out, but I can't stress enough um how wonderful this'll work. And the crazy thing is, is as we look across all of our clients, we literally see a unsubscribe rate of under twenty percent. Which is almost unheard of for, for email marketing. So um, people don't typically unsubscribe from neighborhood news, so. All that said, if you didn't already know that this is also built in your website. Um, so if they're on your boxy site, you'll have a page where they can sign up for neighborhood news. This is a great page to send people to on social media. Um, you can actually create in the settings in engage. You can create your little link for what your neighborhood news signup is and you can attach that to anything that you post. Um, super cool. Um. Doorbell always rings when I'm on a web call. Um, and then if they come in through neighborhood news, they'll automatically be created as a contact on Moxie Engage as well. The other neat thing about this is if Jody sends me a neighborhood news and I click on the email, it takes me to Jody's website. And that's where the report shows, which is super cool. Because that way, if I'm looking and seeing all this stuff, I can click on property search right there at the top. Uh, or go to resources and see the property area uh information that she's put together, right? So it brings them to where we want them to be, which is searching our website for properties. So um, super cool tool. What's new with engage? Number one, um, this is a minor thing, but we basically made it so that it's easier to. If you're pulling a list of your people, it used to just always show this expanded view, which shows uh. Who they are, the most recent activity, what category they're in, what groups they're in. So now we have a collapsed view that just makes it much easier to go through. So you can see more users. The other thing is we created, we changed the days on market to days to sell. Um, so that's, that was kind of a minor issue, but that's something that came up. So um, we, we created and changed that as well. Um. The thing is, we've worked to try to make the onboarding a lot smoother for emails. So um, there's a self-serve sync at onboarding. And again, if you have uh G Suite, Office three sixty five or Gmail, you can integrate. The other thing that's coming, if it hasn't already launched, is GoDaddy. So if you have GoDaddy email, now we can sync that as well. Um, so that was something that was asked about a lot. So happy to see that that, I believe, is launched. Um, the other thing we've done is. Tried to make it easier for you to be able to upload your contacts. Um, so um. I, you guys were talking about earlier, you know, what I always suggest is if you've, if you've exported contacts from whatever system. I personally think it's the best to just download our CSV template, have that open in a window. Download your other one, have that open in a window and then just copy and paste. So first name, copy that column over to first name for ours. If you do that, you're gonna make your life a lot easier. Um, in terms of bringing in the data and bringing it in clearly. Um, if you do sync, you're gonna get companies and, or pardon me, you're gonna get contacts that come over that you're not wanna, wanna market to. Um, that is just kind of a necessary evil for the way that sync works. So um, you know, all you gotta do is go through and you can mark those as personal or remove them. Keep in mind that if you remove a contact from engage, it does not remove them from your email. Um, all it does is remove the path to that contact, so they just don't show up in engage. Um, which is an important thing, I think, to mention. And then there's our website, super easy to use, there's templates in there. Um. We make the search about as easy as possible. Um, the way that it works is if somebody's on your site and they're searching. If they wanna part a property or contact an agent, it'll ask them to create a co- uh, an account, first name, last name, email. I believe it asks for a zip code. Once they create an account, brings that contact into Moxie Engage. But then you can also go under faves and saves for that contact and see, here's all the properties that they liked. The system actually allows them to put in remarks, so you can see what they're saying about the properties. And so you're already kinda starting that dialogue, which I think is super cool. Um, IDX search, there's the lead capture, search near me, location-based search is now live. Um, really, your website, the power of your website, somebody asked about SEO and its content. So if you want to have more people come to your website, number one, point people to it. So right, use the neighborhood news or say, you know, go on there and create kind of a neighborhood spotlight for. Um, I have an example site I can show you guys, but you know, if I'm in Florida and I create a page about Claremont. Then, you know, then I can run ads or I can just do a post that says, hey, if you're curious about what's like to live in Claremont, click here. Take them to your website. So the more, the more information you can put on your website, that's gonna get more people to go there. Uh, we do what we can behind the scenes in terms of trying to drive SEO, but um, you know, what they really like is content. A blog helps as well. Um, so if you have a blog, that can really, really help out, which I love blogs. Cuz it's another excuse to take people to say, check this out, here's my post about this. They go to your website, your cat hopefully can capture some people and you're showing that market knowledge. I always say you have to give people information they can't just Google for themselves. Um, so using the blog functionality, especially with WordPress, because it is uh pretty much the top blogging platform out there. Um, great way to get people to go to your site, so. We now have a two-step verification for web users. Um, this was put in frankly, because we went into Canada with uh. One twenty, was C twenty one Canada, and it's a requirement up there, but basically it's gonna help you to suss out bogus accounts, right? So um, if they go in there and type in Mickey Mouse at gmail dot com, it's not gonna actually make a contact. Cuz when they send an email to Mickey Mouse at gmail, it probably doesn't exist, or if it does, they're gonna ignore it. So um, there's now a two-step verification, so it just gives you higher quality leads that come in. We've also added a testimonial tree widget, so if you're using testimonial tree, uh, you can have these. Uh, reviews come in and show on your websites. Note that if you're already using um Zillow Reviews, you have to pick one of the two. Um, brokerages can use either testimonial tree or Zillow. Um, and then obviously you'd have to have testimonial tree by itself as it's a partner integration. The other thing we've done, we have a new kind of full property details page URL. This is another thing that was done for SEO. So basically, we've changed how we internally name pages, that way we can get more people to check out your properties. And then we added the see similar listings button, which is a really nice button that's keeping people on the site longer. Um, so if they pull up a property, they can take a look and see, obviously, uh, additional properties, you know. We already have a pretty good score in terms of people staying on websites, um, but this just keeps them on there longer, right? So um, very, very cool. You can see it down there. You can favorite, hide, share a listing or click see similar.
Hey Brett, I have a question um regarding the testimonial tree. Uh, do you know if that's something Century Twenty One's gonna embrace? Right now, they're using Real Satisfied.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, Real Satisfied, I know when I was at one twenty one, they were telling people how to get those on there. Um, you know, it's, it's always hard to tell with approved suppliers. Um. You know, testimonial tree, I think, was embraced by at least one of the brands over, over at anywhere. Um. Feels like they're going more towards Real Satisfied, which we're currently working with Real Satisfied on having better integrations. But um, you know, there are ways to get reviews on the site, obviously, that's what the folks were handing out there at one twenty one. But um, you know, we're looking forward to having a full air integration with them to make it even easier.
Nice, thanks.
So I'm gonna stop sharing the PowerPoint and then before I go live into. Um, I engaged to answer a few other questions. Were there any questions that popped up from what I just shared?
So, hi Brett, it's Patty again. I want to reiterate what you said about neighborhood news. Yes, it's probably one of the easiest and most productive tools, I think, in there. And I, you know, we try to get our agents to use it all the time. Um, two little, two great features in there also that I think is worth mentioning. Is um, you can, in your settings, in that little toolbar, little wheel. You can set it up so that whenever a contact comes in, they're automatically signed up for neighborhood news. You guys should do that. So that if they have their email address and a zip code in there, they'll automatically get your neighborhood news. Um, that's a great feature to do. Um, you can also go into all, I think, everybody on this call right now, really. If you're not using neighborhood news, you should go after this call, go into your contacts and sign everybody up. And you can do it by groups. You can um choose the whole group and sign them up for neighborhood news. And you just have to, if there's no zip code, you have to add a zip code in or you have to X out of them, a problem.
No, I love that. And so while you were talking, I just showed where you do that. You literally click on the cog right here next to find people. It's on the first page, so neighborhood news automatic signup, which is right here. Um, you can also create your own auto-response email that when you have a new lead come through. Um, also under subscriptions, neighborhood news in that section, you can change the message. So you can click there and then when I was talking about creating a signup link, this would be where you'd do it. So if you go under the neighborhood news section of, of your settings, this, this is the link. That you can then use or go into Bitly, if you haven't used Bitly, B I T dot L Y. You can make a shortened version of that, but this would be the link that I would use for Facebook posts, for Twitter, Instagram, whatever it may be. Like, I would have that link everywhere, cuz that's just anybody who goes there and signs up, it's another contact from my database, so. Another thing I'll mention in here, just to kinda show you guys, if you haven't seen how you, how this works. Um, under groups, you can verify your groups to save them to Moxie Engage. So if you pulled in, um, so if you're using groups in your Gmail, then that's gonna pull those over here. But as soon as you verify them, uh, calendar, special dates, you can turn on or off calendar reminders. Um, for things like their birthday, anniversary or the house-iversary. Um. And then down here under your subscriptions, listing announcements, again, you can change what goes out to folks. Uh, in save search, you can change what goes out to folks in terms of the generic messaging. So um, good place to come in and kinda go through each one and make sure it's personalized, it sounds like you when these emails go out. Um, I do wanna address, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, you're fine.
Um, when you add people, at the bottom, it says like the four categories that you have to categorize them into. And two of them, if you don't select that their previous client is that, they will be deleted or something like that. That not, no information will be able to be updated. It was something weird.
Yeah, so the categorized wizard, basically, if you come in, you can use the categorized wizard or you can add them to a category, category. I like categorized wizard cuz these are people that haven't been categorized, so I can see here for Richard. If he's a non-client, then that's personal collaborator or move from engage. If you mark him as personal, it will keep them in your database, but it won't put them on any marketing campaign, same thing with collaborator. So if you, for example, have a database of other agents in your market, you wanna use collaborator, remove from engage. That's the one that'll take that contact out of engage. Um, as far as if you're working with them as client. You can make them a seller prospect, a buyer prospect, create a marketing plan. Uh, yeah, so I'll just say create a marketing plan and then this will tell you, are they past seller, past buyer, past seller and buyer. So I'll say.
Or it could be none of these, right?
Yeah, so for that one, I picked a couple, but that's the easy way to do it. The other thing you can do is go into my people. And pull up the person. So if I go into Sasha here. Um, if I, if you go into the profile and edit it, you can use that to add designate them as a collaborator or personal. And then if you have a question about it, learn more. You can also mark them as a past seller, past buyer, or if they're an agent, you can add them as a recruit. So this would be where you wanna do that, um, to bring people in. I do wanna address a couple of the other questions that I got. So if I go to my people in terms of, would, there is no native text messaging. In our system, we work with a company called Wave Group, um, that you can use to send out texting. And messaging, text blasts, et cetera. Um, that is not something that's included. You would have to talk to um our sales folks and, and get wave. And the way that works is basically, as long as the company has said yes, the, that's available to our agents. Then you as an agent can sign up for it, um, and pay for it if you're looking for it. I don't know what the costs are, I'm guessing it's based on. Uh, certain package of what you're looking for, but that is the texting and messaging, it's through a third party. We don't have a native in there and that was a decision made by the board. Um, at the time, a lot of, uh, I don't wanna mention the name, Keller Williams Brokerages. Were spam texting people and uh getting themselves into trouble. And so uh, they decided not to make that a feature that was included. But you can use the wave to uh use the dialer, which we calling uh or messaging. As far as mailing labels goes, um, if I go into filters. Cuz that was another question, was a mailer. Um, you can create labels, you can't really mail from here. But the way you do that is if you go under your groups, I'm gonna pull up my past buyers. So if I have those two groups, I've pulled them up. Now, when I go here, um, this'll change to my past buyers from those groups. All you'd wanna do is hit select all and then you can click on export mailing labels. And that would be, that's gonna give you the file you would need to print mailing labels uh in a different program. So that's how you generate those uh mailing labels. So I'm just gonna check uh quickly, um, what, any other questions that we had? Cuz I wanna make sure I got to, got to all for all of them that came through. Um, let's see here. And I thank you guys for your time. I'm buzzing through this, but it's, there's a lot to cover. Um, so. Postcards, um, you can do that if you have Quantum Digital. Uh, I talked about texting. Boosting the SEO on the website, that's content, that's the way to do that. Um, keep in mind that at launch, C twenty one has a template. So every single agent from C twenty one has the same webpage. So just as an agent going in and changing up your homepage and like add your bio and maybe adding a different photo. That alone is gonna set you apart from thousands of agents who haven't done that, right? Cuz Google doesn't like when it's the same exact material over and over and over again. So just going in and making small changes, that's the best first step and then just going and personalize it, so it feels like you. Um, talked about how to send letters. Um, as far as the last question, which was how do we get an intro letter into Moxie Present? That populates with the client's information into our CMA? So when you create a CMA, it will bring in that client's information, it'll bring in your information, but there's no kind of a. Merge, you could create a generic letter as part of your page that says, dear so-and-so, here's, you know, the information that you'd want in there. Way you could do that, though, is in present, you can create your own templated pages. So if you had a templated page, it's on the intro level or intro letter, you could copy that into your report. And then they go in and edit the name, that would be the best way to do that, but there's nothing that will automatically like bring in that information to fill in those blanks. Basically, the pages that have the blanks filled in from the information are the pages that were pre-built to use for those presentations. So I think I hit on all those questions. Any other questions that have come up? I've got a little extra time, I can hang out with you guys if there's something that you're curious about or um. Uh, you know, a question that you're thinking about, um. Happy to, happy to hang out for a few minutes and.
I have one, I have one more quick one, Brett. E-blast and in, in uh engage, is there a way to do an e-blast where you can pull the report on who's opened it? The open rate, all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, so if you go under your campaigns. Um, this would be where you can pull up any of your e-blasts or any of your campaigns.
So how do you create the e-blast, though?
Oh, to create an e-blast, you would come in here. It's kind of a funky way to do it, but you basically come in. Like, here's my one that's waiting setup, is May, but you basically come in and create emails first. So you have to come in and email, create an email first, which unfortunately, the way to have to do that is you have to come in and take like a sample one and then duplicate it. Then that, you can change the name on and that's where you create the emails first. Then that, you can change the name on, and that's where you create the emails first. Once you've created the email, that's when you can make, create it into an e-blast. And there's a uh, help article on that, um, on our support website. And one nice thing about support, guys, is because we've been around for ten years. If you do a search for Moxie Engage e-blast, you're gonna, it's probably gonna pull up the page on our support website to tell you how to do that. Um, and I can share that FAQ link with uh, with Jody, and she can forward it on to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you have to create the emails first that you are then putting into an e-blast or a campaign. It's a little bit wonky. I should mention on the campaigns. Close to the end of the year, it's gonna have, see a big change because we bought ActivePipe. We're basically gonna bring in a lot of the ActivePipe functionality into here, so it's gonna get um. Multiple orders of magnitude better. Um, I, campaigns work great, but they're a little chunky to use outside of the ones that are pre-built. So that is something that we are addressing. Also, I should mention that I know that C twenty-one, the brand, is working on. Uh, campaigns as well that they're gonna be sharing with you guys.
Good news.
Yeah. Anything else for I'll hop? And if you have questions, like, I'm the easiest person to get ahold of. I'm B R E T at MoxieWorks dot com. Um, I always like to preface, I'm not tech support. Um, if it's, hey, I'm having this issue, if it's a, if it's a user error question, I can help you out. But if it's, hey, I have three tickets, and I don't know what the status is. What I usually tell people is if you have a status over ninety days and you haven't heard anything for some reason, put in a new ticket for that same issue if it's still happening. Um, you know, sometimes tickets do get lost in the process because of the fact that it bounces back before, between anywhere and. And uh, us, so um, you know, we've done a lot on our end to shore up our customer support. Uh, we've added more people, we've added a whole new. Uh, exact level to that. So um, we're seeing response times. We literally saw it in a meeting yesterday, the response times are going down. Um, which makes me very, very happy, and the amount of tickets are going down, so. Uh, but sixty percent of the tickets that we get are training issues. It's just they don't know how to use it, or you haven't been shown how to use something. So um, you know, always put a ticket in first, but hopefully, um, you know. Take a quick look and support, and if it's something that's saying, you know, why won't it let me do this? Try Googling Moxie Engage, Mail Merge, or Moxie Engage, whatever may be. And a lot of times that'll kind of present the answer, but you're always welcome to email me too. And I will ask folks and try to back channel to try to get answers to questions, so.
Brett, I have a question for you. Do you know of any agent out there that has good SEO? Like, when you Google their name, Moxie comes up first?
Um, you know, I don't have that kind of information. The brand probably does. Um, they get a report of all the websites that are created. Um, and I know I've seen that report before. I just, I don't have it. Um, you know, it's, again, the people that I've seen. Are heard about the big commonalities that they've basically done something to customize their page, whether it's a different template. Whether, you know, adding in a blog, adding in some of the other stuff. I mean, that's really, um. Like, if I pull up my site, um. So I basically spent about two hours one night. And copied a website from a brokerage in Florida. That was thinking about joining or signing up a Moxie. So what I added, you know, I have like a section for each one of these little sections of Florida. You know, I'm outdoor in Orlando, have more information than I have a way to basically, I also have like a lifestyle search, right? So whether you're looking for lakefront, active, downtown, maybe you wanna be out in the country, whatever it is. You know, tried to handle that, blog posts. The services offered. Here, and then obviously, uh, contact info, so. Um, you know, this is, you know, under resources, you can see, you know, for Claremont, I've got a whole page that talks about. Claremont, I've got my seeds and dues, I've got a custom search that shows up. So I mean, the more kind of you can customize things. The better off you're gonna show up in the SEO. Um, the other nice thing too is if you're using videos, uh, embed them on YouTube, right? Because then if you put a YouTube video in here, let's not forget, the second largest search engine in the world is YouTube. And it's owned by Google, so they love it. So if you're using YouTube videos and then having it show up on your blog. Or you see, I've got a whole section for videos. Um, you know, they love this stuff. And this is things I look for, like local chamber of commerce, things like that. So if you put in videos or like video testimonials, that'll help people come to, so.
Is there a way you can share one of these pages, or do you have to share your whole website?
Um, I can share the website, that's fine. Um. And I didn't pick, I didn't pick the name. Uh, um, it's, I was the sixty-ninth person to get. A demo account, and that's why it's what it says. So here, um, but yeah, here, we'll put it in the chat. So yeah, that can give you some ideas. And again, that, I'm not a web programmer at all. I basically, it's, I took graphics and created some graphics, but yeah, it took me about two hours. Um, and that was the first time I ever tried to kind of use it, so.
Nice.
Yeah, and last but not least, there's gonna be something coming soon-ish, probably by the end of the month, but um. And we, there's a class that's gonna be, or at least a page or a blog entry on our website. It's gonna show how to create a digital business card page on Moxie website. This is something I saw a couple of agents do at one twenty-one, so I stole the idea. But um, you can actually create a really cool digital business card that you can use while you're out meeting people. That you send in a link and it looks like, you know, it's download my contact, here's me on social, et cetera. It's kind of a really nice thing to, again, use to, to really kind of build out your website. So that should be coming within the next thirty days, so. Keep an eye out for that. I'll share it with you once it's done, Jenny.
That's great.
You guys are lucky cuz Jody and I are friends, so you get special stuff, so.
I have Marilyn and Holly on here too. She's probably the best one up one twenty-one on this.
Awesome. Yeah, I know. I mean, it was, I had a blast down meeting everybody, um, at one twenty-one. That was a great conference, so, um. But yeah, keep my email, and uh, if you have any other questions, reach out anytime. I'm always happy to help, so.
Great, thank you.
All right, my pleasure. Thanks for your time today, guys. Talk to you later.
Take care. Bye, everyone.